Everybody grab their seat, we'll get started. Uh, thought that, I looked at mine. Welcome everybody, and I think our elected officials are...who are they? Help me out, Jason, you see anybody? I think we're good.
Teresa Lyons.
Teresa, okay, Teresa Lyons. Hey girl, how are you? Good to have you. I think that's it. Okay. Call the meeting to order, but I will remind you, if you've got a cellphone, please put it on silent, or cut it off, or throw it out the window, whatever one you want to do. I'm gonna get Mr. Rodney to bring up the list for me, please. Our marshal. Thank you sir, so much. And I have the privilege this morning to introduce a very good friend of mine, Pastor Bill. You can come on up if you want to, we're gonna get you to pray for our county, pray for this session, and also do the pledge allegiance to the flag. I'll tell you a little bit about Pastor Bill. I go on mission trips, I have been for several years, and take kids all over the United States. And we travel, and we share God's word, and we also help people who need helps within their homes. He's the pastor at Highlands Community Church. We partnership up with him, and he loves the kids, he loves the community, and he does quite a bit. I could tell you some wild stories about him, but you wouldn't believe me if I told you. So Pastor Bill, it's a pleasure to have you, and God bless you, buddy.
Thank you very much.
If y'all will stand.
Thank you all for allowing me to be here with you today to speak. So if you would bow your heads with me, and let's open in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with humble hearts, acknowledging that all wisdom and authority ultimately come from you. So today, Father, as this board gathers to serve the people of Paulding County, we ask for your guidance, wisdom, and discernment in every decision that is made here today. Your word tells us in Micah 6, that what you require of us is to act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with you. May these principles guide every decision made here today. So Lord, we pray for our county, the citizens, and its future. May this be a place where families thrive, businesses flourish, and communities grow in unity and peace. We ask for your protection over our law enforcement officers, our first responders, our educators, and public servants, Fathers, those who give and sacrifice so much on our behalf. Above all, Lord, may your work be done here today. We pray, Father, for a good and fruitful meeting today. We pray this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
So if you would have joined me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and thank you, Board.
Very good to see you this morning. Just a reminder for everybody that the February 5th, 2025 minutes are available from the work session, and also the board meeting, so I hope you had a chance to read those. Next will be the announcements. We had a great time with Team Paulding, Employee of the Month, Austin Vale. We had a great time spending some time with him, and looking forward to even more time with him, as y'all know what I do, so I think we're ready for that now.
So we're here today to celebrate Captain Austin Bell as Paulding County's Marked Employee of the Month. I've known Austin for about 15 years now, we've worked on and off together. And one thing that always comes to mind is his character, his integrity. He always does a really good job, he always cares about the end product of what he's doing, and cares about the people he serves. He got into the fire service to help people, and he's done nothing but that for the last 15 years that I've known him. He works hard, he puts in the extra effort. He's been a beacon of our community, and representative of the fire department. His service delivery is second to none, he's got fantastic customer service. He puts others before himself on a daily basis. He doesn't look for any recognition, he always puts the recognition on his crew, his team, and you can't really ask more in our setting. Well, first word that comes to mind is just fun. When Austin walks into a room, it's just a glow about him. He's always got a smile on his face, he can make light of any situation, and he understands how to make people laugh, and what makes people laugh, and how to be wholesome with it. He did a really good job at just bringing the mood up, and beaming his positivity on the other people. In our profession, we're put under pressure on a daily basis. Some scenes and situations are a lot of pressure. Life or death situations, extremely hazardous situations, and Austin's calm under pressure. He thrives in it. Die and sprout them, and just keep doing what you're doing, man. There's no secret to it, there are no secret formulas, treating people right, having a good work ethic, having good morals and character, and he got all of them.
Let me bet you. At this time, we don't have any invited guests, so we'll go right into the bid awards, if y'all don't mind. There's, I think there was eight, if I'm not mistaken. Two, yes. Bid awards, that's what we go and do it. Approved the purchase of E60 R2 Series Bobcat Compact Escalator, actually from the Bobcat of Atlanta, in the amount of $83,450.0 cents. This purchase was approved in the fiscal year 2025 capital budget for the Paulding County DOT, and will be funded using the general fund budget under the Sourcewell contract. And thank you, good to have you.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman.
Can y'all hear?
Sorry, I'll get a little closer. Paulding County DOT would like to request that the Board of Commissioners consider award of the Bobcat. This item was included in the FY 2025 budget as a capital purchase. Paulding County DOT requested and received funding in the amount of $86,000 for a mini excavator with thumb to replace a 2014 Bobcat E50 with over 4,000 hours. This piece of equipment is used in our maintenance division Drainage 1 crews. A quote from Bobcat of Atlanta under the Sourcewell contract was received in the amount of $83,450. And it is recommended that the award of purchase go to Bobcat of Atlanta, Inc. for the E60 R2 Series Bobcat Compact Excavator in the amount of $83,450. Funding for this purchase will be allocated from the FY 2025 general funds. And Paulding DOT would like to request that the Board of Commissioners approve this purchase of an E60-2 Series Bobcat Compact Excavator from Bobcat of Atlanta in the amount of $83,450.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is to award bid number 25016-3802, Richard Creek WTP Inhabitor Trench Project to Saul Construction LLC in the amount of $360,210.0 funded through the renewal and extension fund located in Post 4. Mr. Ray Wooton.
Good morning. Um, out at the Ritson Creek Water Plant, we have an existing area where we're having to redo some of the chemical piping. The Ritson Creek Inhabitor Trench Project is to install new underground chemical piping trench for the addition of a new feed line for the corrosion inhibitor, and to fix an issue with existing piping for the sodium hypochlorite feed. The project will utilize parts of the existing piping trench while installing new conduits and repurposing others. This trench and the new lines we're putting here will cover the existing facility, and it also has room to take care of our expansion when that occurs. This also clears up some of the issues we had with our initial line, and how we had some air locking where the chemical feed was coming in. We advertised for this project back in December. We received two proposals in January. The low bidder was Saul Construction LLC with a low bid of $360,210. And we are hoping that you will award this for us to Saul Construction in that amount of $360,210. And this is in Post 4. Any questions?
Nope, thank you, Ray. We don't have any public participation. We'll go to the consent agendas. This is where we do have seven. The first one is to adopt the government building job description for Superintendent of Maintenance. The next one is approve Chairman Tim Stes to the Paulding County Airport Authority to fill the unexpired term of Sam Hill, ending December 31, 2025. The next one is discuss actions to authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement with Rainville Church Pew Company to view 16 custom pews for Superior Court Courts 3 and 4 in the amount of $54,534. And then authorize the chairman to approve and execute the change order in the fire department. Was you supposed to come up and talk after that?
We're gonna let you anyway. Questions on six or seven? Yes, sir.
Okay, you'll go ahead and do that?
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, let me finish reading this one, because we're gonna do both of them. Authorize the chairman to approve and execute the change order at Fire Station 13 in the amount of $17,248 for the drainage of $1,001.0496, for the range hood, and $1,969 for the new lockers. The total in the change orders is $20,319.96. Now you're up.
Yes, sir, thank you. Hey, good morning. So number six, I don't know if y'all remember, but we did a remodel type on three Superior Courtrooms at the end of last year, Courtrooms 2, 3, and 4, we did a remodel on. And we had enough matching pews to go in one of the courtrooms to fill it up. This is to complete that remodel and fill up Superior Courtrooms 3 and 4 with matching pews. So everything will be matching and uniform in all those courtrooms. We did have multiple contractors look at it and bid on it, and Rainsville was the cheapest one. And all of them will match, use the same type of wood, everything will be the same.
Anything?
Any questions on that one?
Thank you.
And number seven is for Fire Station 13. We're about to finish up that project, so be glad when we get that one done, get that one up and operating. So the total is $20,319.96 for these change orders. The first piece of this is $17,248, and that's for gutter drains to be buried underground. On the back of the building was a site improvement, so it completed the site, instead of the water draining onto the sidewalk and parking lot area, decided to put it underground in the drainage. Decided to put it underground in the drainage to go into the storm drain. And the $1,102.96 is for an upgraded range hood, which it needed to complete the look of the kitchen. So an upgrade on that one. And $1,969 for new lockers in the Battalion Chief's Office. It was designed with steel lockers that were not lockable, just hangable type lockers, and we decided we needed lockable wood lockers. So we're going to take those lockers down. Well, the contractor has moved them. We're going to reuse those lockers, and we're going to add some wood lockable lockers in the Battalion Chief's Office.
I just had a question on the range hood. It said in the backup material that that was something that was on the specs from the get-go?
It was, but this is an upgrade to it. It did have a range hood, but it looked unfinished. So we're going to make it a finished product. Yes, ma'am.
Any others?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Next is clear the following items listed as surplus and approve their disposal through the auction, trade, or donation. There's actually five of them in the fleet area. There's two of them in the sheriff's office, and there's two of them in the water and sewage. Next is approve the increase of the court of bayless to the rate of $70 and raising it to $100. Next is discuss action to accept the sanitary sewage easement dedication for the potential maintenance and a few sanitary sewage lines from HFT Development LLC. This project is located in post three. I guess you don't need to say anything on that, do you? All right. Would any of our commissioners like to move this to new business, any of these items? I hear none. Okay. There's no old business, new business. To discuss action to adopt ordinance 25-02, amending the development regulations for Paulding County, Georgia under Article Five, attending Section 5.7, base preparation for paving application and Section 5.8 requiring paving sections. You're up.
Yes, sir. Good morning again. Paulding DOT would like to request approval to amend Article Five of the Development Regulations, Section 5.7, base preparation and paving application. This includes Section 5.7.1, streets within a residential subdivision, including S1, S2, and S3 streets, along with Section 5.7.2, non-residential development in section, along with Section 5.8, required paving sections. This amendment will update the development regulations to provide for the following. Increase asphalt topping from one inches to one and a half inches on all S1, S2, and S3 streets. This additional half inch will provide additional structure and increase durability and longevity. Provide additional guidance on pavement coring. Asphalt coring at regular intervals will help ensure that streets are constructed to asphalt thicknesses and required by the development regulations. And then also increase the base thickness from six inches to eight inches. Currently, S1 and S2 streets require six inches of crushed stone base. Increasing the thickness to eight inches will provide additional structure and support, which leads to stronger, lasting roads and fewer repairs. Paulding County DOT would like to request that the Board of Commissioners consider adopting ordinance 25-02, amending the development regulations for Paulding County, Georgia, under Article Five, amending Section 5.7, base preparation and paving application, and Section 5.8 requiring paving sections.
Discussion. Thank you, Erica.
Yes, sir.
Next is discuss action to adopt ordinance 25-03, amending the development regulation for Paulding County, Georgia under Article One, attending Section 1.6.7, street access.
Yes, sir. On August 23 of 2022, Paulding County Board of Commissioners amended the development regulations, Article 1.6.7, street access, reducing the thresholds of 250 residential dwelling units being constructed with only one outlet on an existing public street to a maximum of 120 residential dwelling units being constructed with only one street outlet. Since this amendment, Paulding County has determined additional language is needed for this section. This amendment will update the development regulations to provide the following. Clarify what an existing public street is considered. Within Article 1.6.7, an existing public street would mean a street not included as part of a platted subdivision unless classified as a collector roadway or higher roadway classification. And also clarify what type of access must be constructed as an outlet on an existing public street. All accesses to an existing public street will be required to be a full access intersection. For the purposes of this section, full access intersection means allowing all potential movements, including left in, left out, right in, and right out. Paulding County DOT would like to request the Board of Commissioners to adopt ordinance 25-03, amending the development regulations for Paulding County, Georgia, under Article One, amending Section 1.6.7.
Thank you. No discussion. Next is discuss action to approve a project funding allotment increase in the amount of $250,000 for the completion of Seven Hills Boulevard widening project to C.W. Matthews Construction Company, Inc. And allowing the increase will be funded by SPOSS funds. This project is located in post four.
Yes, sir. And the last one. On August 10, 2021, Paulding County awarded the Seven Hills Boulevard widening project to C.W. Matthews Contracting Company, Inc. in the amount of $4,412,516.82. Seven Hills widening project is located in post four and consisted of widening approximately three quarters of a mile of Seven Hills Boulevard from Cedar Crest Road to Little Pumpkin Vine Creek from two to four lanes, including the installation of a multi-lane roundabout. The notice to proceed for the project was issued September 15 of 2021 with a construction completion date of September 15, 2023. This completion date was extended until January 17 of 2025 due to utility relocations and weather delays, and now the project is substantially complete. During the course of construction for the widening project, additional utility relocations, stormwater facilities, needed replacement were identified, along with additional landscaping. These items were not part of the original scope and plans, which caused monetary and time delays. The supplemental amount needed to complete the project is approximately $250,000, which is 5.67% above the total contract amount. SPOSS funds would be utilized for this allotment request. And Paulding County DOT would like to request the Board of Commissioners approve a project funding allotment increase in the amount of $250,000 for the completion of the Seven Hills Boulevard widening project to C.W. Matthews Contracting Company, Inc.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any questions? Okay. That concludes our regular business. We don't have any public participation this morning. Any comments or questions that our commissioners have? They're discussing it down there on the end, so we'll give them a minute. You don't have any?
No.
Okay. Any here? You're okay? I'm sorry, my phone's going off. This actually is close the, close this session, so I need a motion to close this session and go into, do I need to go to executive session first?
Executive session first. You just need a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
We will. We'll go to executive session, personnel, and I need a motion.
Motion to go into executive session for personnel.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And we'll be coming back in here after this session, and we'll adjourn from here. Is that right?
Yes.
You don't have to walk so slowly, we see you.
She knows you're right on.
Do I hear a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to add to the consent agenda, changing the title of Information Technology Director to Chief Information Officer, and to add the title of Chief Financial Officer to the title of Comptroller.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion closed. So do I hear a motion to return, uh, to return, to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It's passed. Y'all have a great, great afternoon.